If I could, I'd like to call the December 18th Board of Commissioners meeting to order with the Pledge of Allegiance and an invocation led by Vice Chairman David Elwell.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we thank you for allowing us to gather here tonight in your presence. We also thank you and praise you today for the miracle of your son's birth. We thank you, Lord, for the many reasons we have been given a Merry Christmas and we rejoice for each blessing. We ask that you give us guidance and wisdom tonight as we move the business of the county. We ask that you watch over those that protect us from our firefighters and police officers to our military, both home and abroad. We pray for the families of the two police officers taken from us just yesterday in Chicago while protecting their city. Lastly, we pray for the family, especially the children of Shawn Chapel, killed yesterday in a motor vehicle accident in our county. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Mr. Lightner?
Here.
Commissioner Walls? Commissioner Rice?
Here.
Commissioner Duckham? Commissioner Tompkins?
Here.
Commissioner Mahoney?
Present.
Commissioner Williams?
Present.
Commissioner Elwell?
Here.
Chairman Chatwell?
Here.
A present.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to invite the Jackson Symphony Orchestra Community Music School to present our festive holiday music.
Hello, I'm Becky and I'm from the Jackson Symphony Orchestra. What a lot of people don't realize is the orchestra has a community music school in the building. We have 25 teachers that teach anything from violin to piano to percussion to voice. We cover almost any instrument and we have several students at that one.
Hello, everyone. I'm Clyde, and I'm one of the violin teachers at the community school. And this is Mason. And Mason's going to play there today. He's going to play the concert, you know, by George Perlman. And Mason has been playing for 11 months.
Hello, my name is Emily Cruz. I was being seen today. Today I will be...
Emily, yeah.
My name is Emily Cruz. I will be seeing, do you hear what I hear today?
Set the night wind to the little lamb. Do you see what I see? Way up in the sky, little lamb. Do you see what I see? A star, a star dancing in the night with a tail as big as a kite. With a tail as big as a kite. Set the little lamb to the shepherd boy. Do you hear what I hear? Ringing through the sky, shepherd boy. Do you hear what I hear? A song, a song high above the trees with a voice as big as the sea. With a voice as big as the sea. Set the shepherd boy to the mighty king. Do you know what I know? In your palace, warm mighty king. Do you know what I know? A child, a child shivers in the cold. Let us bring him silver and gold. Let us bring him silver and gold. Set the king to the people everywhere. Listen to what I say. Pray for peace, people everywhere. Listen to what I say. The child, the child sleeping in the night. He will bring us goodness and light. He will bring us goodness and light.
Hi, everyone. My name is Cassie Christie. I play the viola. I'm a junior at Jackson High and I've been playing for six years now. Today I will be playing Beret I and II by Bach.
My name is Tom Chubb and I'm a top four at Jackson High. I'll play the last one. I've played the violin for 11 years, 15 days, so I hope you don't fall asleep.
Say one last thing here. Another, can we give all the kids another... I wanted to mention that I have a lot of kids that beat it. But I have one student out in her attic, but her grandfather had made a beautiful instrument. And now she studies and she's doing very well. And Sherwood is, I think, six weeks good. So, yes, we're doing good things with the older ones too. Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you to the Jackson Symphony Orchestra. At this time, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda. We have a motion in support. Any items for removal? Additions? Seeing or hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried. At this time, we're at awards and recognition and we have three of them this evening. Before I start this, I want a little candid note, John. I learned today that there's some people in some township who say they support you on Spring Harbor Road wholeheartedly. Ron wishes you the best going forward. Whereas Jonathan Williams was elected in 2008 to represent District 9 for the citizens of the city of Jackson and served for four years through 2012. John graciously accepted the call to service to the 8th District in the late fall of '17 through '18 to complete the term of John Palachek, who passed away suddenly. John sacrificed time, his family, and including wife Tucker, Anne of 18 years, and son Tater, and time with them. John put up with staff misspellings of his name for his entire term. Whereas John's political governmental education spans over the better part of 20 years, beginning with an education from Jackson Community College, receiving Associates in Arts, a Bachelor's Degree in Social Science, Michigan State University, go Green, Masters of Public Policy and Administration from Western Michigan University. There are many other whereas's here to put on here, but I'm going to skip down to a whereas. John was assigned to be, to a fully participated in the Jackson County Township Supervisor's Landline for four years, the Sanitary Code Appeal Board for four years, Human Services Coordinating Alliance, Food Protection Hearing Board, the Jackson County Land Bank Authority, the County Planning Commission for a year, and the Region 2 Planning Commission for one year. Therefore, be it resolved that the Jackson County Board of Commissioners wishes to express their heartfelt gratitude and sincere appreciation to Jonathan Williams. John?
Thank you.
Thanks again. Sure. Do you want to say anything again?
Oh, all right. Well, I've got two minutes. All right. Two minutes.
Just two minutes? No, I just, in appreciation, full appreciation of the constituents. Mr. Williams, congratulations on your election and looking to see great things from you and continue on representing the 8th in that bipartisan fashion that I think John Palachek would have liked and I hopefully was able to continue and carry on, at least through the rest of his term. As for the fellow commissioners, thank you so much for your support. And many of you I've had the opportunity to serve with prior. For those who are new that I had the opportunity to serve with, it certainly has been my pleasure. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Carl Rice Jr. was elected in 2010 representing District 3 of Leonie Township in Vandercooke Lake and served eight years through 2018. Whereas Carl gives thanks to his Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, for his family who has lovingly sacrificed much of their time of togetherness, including his wife Penny of 38 years and his two sons, BJ and Ryan, who passed away too soon at the age of 19. Whereas Carl's grateful for the tremendous support he has received from his wife, son, and extended family, and close friends, and great nieces and nephews. Whereas Carl has earned his Associate's Degree, and Bachelor's Degree, and Master's Degree, and Doctorate Degree. And whereas Carl was appointed to Lifeway's Board of Directors, diligently advocated for Jackson County's mental health needs. Whereas Carl served on numerous Third District Local Township and An-hoc Steering Committees. And during his service as a County Commissioner, Carl served as the Human Services Committee his entire term of office, including two years as Vice Chair and two years as Chair, the Personnel and Finance Committee for six years, and the Policy Committee for two years. Therefore, be it resolved that the Jackson County Board of Commissioners wishes to express their heartfelt gratitude and sincere appreciation to Carl Rice Jr. for his selfless service. Carl? Therefore, be it resolved that the Jackson County Board of Commissioners wishes to express their heartfelt gratitude and sincere appreciation to Carl Rice Jr. for his selfless service. Carl?
Can it be real brief?
Real brief. Two minutes.
I'm gonna try, here, I'm gonna try to stand sideways here. I know, I know, John, you did it the right way, but I, eight years, wow. I want to especially thank, as I mentioned earlier, my family. Many times, as a commissioner, the public looks at us and they have a certain view of what we do. They have a perspective that often comes across as though we don't do much. They see us up here, they see us conduct county business, but I tell you what, I've learned a great deal as a county commissioner. Prior to being a county commissioner, probably made me know as a police officer, mental health therapist, but I tell you, being a Jackson County Commissioner and serving the public and the responsibility that goes with that, all the commissioners I served with who aren't here now and the current ones, I can just tell you that it is a sacrifice. In fact, one of the first things that Chairman Shatwell said to me that, he says, being a commissioner is a sacrifice and it's also satisfying. And that's true, it's both. And for me, my whole experience in this has been very satisfying and I feel very blessed to have been honored to serve. And thank you very much.
Whereas Sarah Lightner has held office for the Jackson County Board of Commissioners in District One for six consecutive years and whereas during her tenure as county commissioner, Sarah has served on the Affairs and Agencies Committee her entire term of office, including two years as Vice Chair, on Personnel and Finance, four years, including two years as Vice Chair, and on the Human Services Committee for two years. Whereas Sarah has served the Jackson County at a state and national level during her tenure, she has been on the Michigan Association of Counties Judiciary and Public Safety Committee, serving as Chair for the last two years, also serving on the National Association of Counties Steering Committee on Justice. Sarah has also had the privilege of serving on the Michigan Counties, on all of the Michigan, serving on all Michigan Counties as the Governor Appointee to the Criminal Justice Policy Commission. And whereas over her term as Commissioner, Sarah gave of her time and talent for the betterment of the people of Jackson County, particularly the residents of Springport, Rives, Tompkins, Sandstone, and Parma Townships. And whereas Sarah has always been dedicated to connecting people and networks of Jackson County, her no-fluff demeanor and her charming personality and sense of humor will be greatly missed. The Jackson County community has benefited from her stellar service as a county commissioner. Therefore, be it resolved that the Jackson County Board of Commissioners express its sincere appreciation for Sarah Lightner's contributions and wishes her success in her position as State Representative for the Sixty-Fifth House District. Sarah Lightner, y'all cousin, come on up here and get this, would you?
I'm super quick because I'm a bullet point kind of person, so anyways, it's been an honor and privilege to represent the people of District One the last six years. I look forward to representing a larger district in Lansing and most all of you have my cell phone number, feel free to use it, give it out. I don't plan on changing it unless someone stalks me and sends me nasty stuff, so, no, but in all seriousness, I do appreciate the opportunity and the privilege to continue to represent you on a larger scale, so, thank you.
Any communications and petitions to come before the board? Please present them to the clerk. Seeing none, we have a special order public hearing, the Enterprise Group's Brownfield Plan. Would you please, Amy Guerrero?
Amy Guerrero, representing the Enterprise Group, which provides staffing to the Jackson County Brownfield Redevelopment Authority on behalf of the county. I have to say, these are hard acts to follow the performances and proclamations and all of that. You have before you a resolution tonight to approve a Brownfield Plan for 2603 West Michigan. Some of you may recall that that property was once the Bel Air Drive-In property. Brownfield tools such as Brownfield Plan, they say are used to kind of level the playing field between brownfield sites and greenfield sites. And I think if you think about how long that site has remained there undeveloped and we now have a tool to help provide financing to address the environmental issues that need to be done there, you can see that those tools are well needed and used here in the county often. This is in Blackman Township and it is called Jackson South Storage Southwest. Doug Deicert is a developer of this property. If you go by it, you can see that one of the buildings is already up, another one should be up this year and there are more planned for future years. Lighting is up, I went by the other night and lights are up now. They are reserving the front parcel, that's the road frontage, for eventual commercial development, hopefully. So, the Blackman Township has already endorsed this project through a resolution of its support and the Jackson County Brownfield Redevelopment Authority encourages your approval tonight of the Brownfield Plan. And if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
This time, I'd like to open the floor up to the public if they'd like to comment on this also.
Thank you.
Commissioners? Entertain a motion to close the public hearing? Have a motion in support? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried. We've arrived at the time for the first public comment. Each individual may state their name. You have three minutes to speak and address the board. You may only address the board once under this public comment opportunity and may not yield your time to others. Board members will not debate or answer questions at this time. First opportunity for public comment.
A good evening. My name is Roger Gady and home address is 2682 Vineyard Lane. I've been here tonight to request your consideration for several appointments. One would be to the Parks Board Commission, another would be to the Jackson County Planning Commission, and the third would be Land Bank. Over my past working experience, I've certainly been involved with very large budget, which might call the work to get done, you know, because when they're large budget, they don't get done in one year. For instance, I was involved with converting a World War II plant in Adrian from aluminum fabrication to a plastics molding and assembly operation. However, also been involved with innovating new procedures with employee groups and I've had other involvement with like junior achievement and which gave me a chance to work with many other diverse groups. And I would appreciate your consideration and I wish to say thank you at this time.
Any other public comment? Public comment is now closed. We have no special meetings or standing committees. This time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the November thirteenth Board of Commissioners meeting. Motion by Commissioner Duckham, seconded by Dr. Tompkins. Any questions, removal, corrections, deletions? Here the vote posted. Now arrived at the consent agenda. Entertain a motion? May I have a motion in support? Any items for removal? Hearing nothing. Madam Clerk, could you post the vote?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Consent agenda has passed unanimously. We've now arrived at standing committee. Standing committee affairs and agency for the last time, chaired by Vice Chairman Commissioner David Elwell. Commissioner Elwell?
That sounds a bit ominous.
We changed the name.
Okay, so we have two things up on the agenda tonight. First is the appointments, as usual, and we have quite a number tonight. First up is the 911 Advisory Board for One Township Fire Representative Position and the applicant and recommendation from committee is Tim McAldonny.
Anyone to concur? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried. Vice Chairman Elwell?
Next up is the Airport Board, one public member. Current member is Tom Davis. He was the only applicant and recommendation from committee.
We have a motion in support? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Duly carried. Vice Chairman Elwell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next, we have the Department on Aging Advisory Council. These are a total of eight seats and there are seven applicants, each of them being the current member, which leaves a vacant seat. And if there's no objection or nominations from the floor, I would nominate them as a slate, remembering that there's one open seat at the end.
Question, Commissioner Duckham? Yes?
So I will nominate, as a group, the current members and the recommendations from committee being Diane Derby, Jeannie Kubisch, Carrie Good, Sharon Best, Barbara McClure, Tina Gross, and Michael Bichard.
We have a motion in support? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried.
That leaves one vacant seat. There was no applicant for the eighth seat and no recommendation from committee and a nomination from the floor would be just dandy.
Support? Mr. Gady, are you willing to serve?
Yes, sir.
Any other nominations? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next is the Parks and Recreation. There are two seats, both public members. The first seat is currently held by Christina Edgar, who reapplied and is the recommendation for reappointment.
Any nominations from the floor? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried. Vice Chairman?
Second seat is also a public member seat, currently held by Michael Way, who's reapplied and is the recommendation from committee.
Support? We have a motion in support? Any nominations from the floor? Any other nominations from the floor? Madam Clerk, are you ready to call the roll?
I am, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Lightner?
Way.
Mr. Walls?
Way.
Mr. Rice?
Way.
Mr. Duckham?
Gady.
Mr. Tompkins?
Way.
Mr. Mahoney?
Way.
Mr. Williams?
Gady.
Mr. Elwell?
Way.
Chairman Shatwell?
Way. Seven for Way. Vice Chairman?
Next is the Jackson County Planning Commission, two seats, citizen-at-large, both of them. The first one has a seat that's currently held by Tim Burns and the applicant is Matthew Schwartzlander and the recommendation from committee.
Any nominations from the floor?
Chairman?
Mr. Williams?
Tim Burns, who currently sits on the committee, has submitted an application. I nominate Timothy Burns.
Any other nominations from the floor? Seeing or hearing none? Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Walls?
Burns.
Mr. Rice?
Burns.
Mr. Duckham?
Burns.
Mr. Tompkins?
Burns.
Mr. Mahoney?
Burns.
Mr. Williams?
Schwartzlander.
Mr. Elwell?
Burns.
Mr. Lightner?
Schwartzlander.
Chairman Shatwell?
Burns.
Seven Burns.
Mr. Burns won with seven votes. Mr. Vice Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The second citizen-at-large seat currently held by Roger Gady, the applicant Roger Gady, and the recommendation from committee is Roger Gady.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next is the Land Bank Authority, two open seats. The first is one nonprofit corporation representative. The current member is Catherine Martin. Barbara Shelton was the applicant and also the recommendation from committee.
Any nominations from the floor?
I'd like to nominate Roger Gady.
Any other nominations from the floor? Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Rice?
Gady.
Mr. Duckham?
Gady.
Mr. Tompkins? Mr. Mahoney?
Shelton.
Mr. Williams?
Gady.
Mr. Elwell?
Gady.
Mr. Lightner? Mr. Walls?
Shelton.
Chairman Shatwell?
Gady. Seven?
Seven.
Seven votes. Congratulations, Roger. Mr. Vice Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next is the Region Two Planning Commission. There's two seats, both public members. The first seat is held by Tim Burns, who appears to not have reapplied for this seat and there was no recommendation from committee for it. The second public member seat is occupied by Rick Seegers, who applied and is the recommendation from committee.
Any nominations from the floor? Seeing or hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That will carry forward to January.
As will, I believe, the Substance Use Disorder Oversight Policy Board, which has one public member, Ed Woods, no applicant, and no recommendation from committee, and will continue to advertise.
The chair would like to nominate Mr. Woods from the floor.
Okay.
He submitted his application late. It was submitted electronically. I have support from Commissioner Duckham. Any other nominations from the floor? He had made the Human Services Committee where that organization appoints, or not appoints, but answers to in the... appoints, but answers to in the general meetings earlier this month. Any other nominations from the floor? Seeing or hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried. Vice Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next up, we have the Enterprise Group, topic of the Brownfield Plan. It's the actual resolution approving the Brownfield Plan for Jackson South Storage Southwest, located at 2603 West Michigan Avenue in Blackman Charter Township, and I would so move the resolution.
Moved by Vice Chairman Elwell, supported by Commissioner Lightner. Any questions? Are you ready? Okay. Sorry.
Commissioner Duckham? Commissioner Tompkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Mahoney?
No.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Elwell?
Yes.
Mr. Lightner?
Yes.
Mr. Walls?
Yes.
Commissioner Rice?
Yes.
Chairman Shatwell?
Yes. Past eight one. Vice Chairman Elwell?
Mr. Chair, taking a little liberty as the final chair of this committee, having the appointment spread out amongst all the committees come January. Thank you.
Standing Committee Human Services, Commissioner Carl Rice. Commissioner Rice?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Human Services has no business to come before the board tonight.
Standing Committee Personnel and Finance, chaired by Commissioner Duckham. Commissioner Duckham?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have no business to conduct tonight.
Seeing that there's no unfinished business to come before the board, I needed, we have new business, Midstate Health Network. Administrator Controller Overton, please.
Thank you. This is a renewal, three-year renewal of the existing agreement we have with them. It's pretty straightforward. There's not really any cost to us for Mental Health Substance Abuse Policy Board, and frankly, if it ever were to be determined that we need to terminate the agreement, there's only a 30-day termination. It served us well for the last three. We'd recommend that we authorize it for another three.
We have a motion and support. Any questions or comments? Can you post the resolution?
Yes.
Okay. Rice and Duckham? Resolution passed nine zero. Any other new business to come before the board? To make the audience aware, the Standing Committee system will continue to exist next year in 2019, but the names of the committees are going to change, and there will be redistribution of some of the different assignments that report to those committees. So if you ever are looking to find something out, please don't hesitate to check the county website out. That'll tell you exactly where the items of interest are reporting to and when the committees are meeting. Public comment. We've arrived at the second time for public comment. Each individual will state their name. You have two minutes now to address the board. You may only address the board under public comment and opportunity and may not yield your time to others. Board members will not debate nor answer questions at this time.
I'm Roger Gady. I'd like to thank the Board of County Commissioners for your consideration and appointments that you've made for myself and for the other persons that have applied. And this is the time of year I also wish to thank everybody. A very Merry Christmas, and certainly a very Happy New Year coming up.
Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Public comment is now closed. Any Commissioner comments? Mr. Rice?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've already said my two minutes when I received the resolution, but I also like to say Merry Christmas to everyone, and also a Happy New Year. I know we all go through different things this time of year, different emotions and things like that, but I certainly pray that things go well for everyone and that everybody is blessed. I also like to comment again about being on this board, and what I'd like to say is, each and every one of these Commissioners here right now, and going back previous Commissioners, I won't say them all, but some of them aren't here with us anymore. Pat Smith, John Plachek, we got Jim Vito, we got, oh, Cliff Hurrell, I can keep going on and on and on. The point is, and we got the current Commissioners, we got Administrator Overton, Deputy Administrator Deborah, and we got Delane up there on the sixth floor, who is a wonderful receptionist and secretary and everything else for us. And I'd just like again to say how honored I have been to serve as a County Commissioner, and I just again hope everybody realizes the amount of work that's done to provide services for this county, by this County Commission. I respect everyone here. Like everybody to know that I sent an email to every Commissioner here. I sent one to the Administrator, I sent one to the Deputy Administrator, and I sent one to Delane, who is our executive receptionist. And that was my two-minute version, everybody. That email was my two-minute version. I do have a 20-minute version I did. If you want that, I can send that later. Thank you.
Any other Commissioner comments? Commissioner Williams?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, and I just want to echo some of what Carl had said. I had the opportunity, is blessed to have the opportunity, to sit on the board at the time when we were hiring a new administrator, and that was Michael Overton at the time. And you're welcome. And I just want to, you know, stepping out, stepping back, fading away from county, the county business, and then coming back on and seeing how strong the team is at the top, and having Deborah on board as well, and getting to know Deborah. And of course, Delane was there when I first came on, but it's just a very well-oiled machine at this point in terms of our ability, I think, to represent the citizens and to get the job done. I wouldn't say everybody agrees on every issue, but I do think that we're respectful, or you're respectful, and I think that that has a lot to do in reflection of how the administration conducts the business. And I just, I really appreciate it. And the cool thing about that is I get to take it back to the classroom, and I get to talk about the time, and I get to talk and tell students how this process ultimately works, and use this Jackson County as a good example. So thank you so much for that opportunity.
Any other Commissioners? Mr. Lightner?
Okay, one last item of Fair business. Beer Fest tickets are on sale right now, so you can get them at the Fair box office. Awesome stocking stuffer. It's a good time. It's March 9th, I think. Yeah, noon to five. Lots of fun. And then, secondly, I just want to say thanks to everybody on the board that's put up with my nonsense for the last six years. It's been great. I mean, obviously, we've butted heads here and there, but at the end of the day, we're able to conduct business for Jackson County that's in the best interest of our county. Some people that have been left out, though, I feel, are our County Clerk, Amanda. She has always had to put up with our nonsense during meetings, taking notes, doing our motions, saying, "What? What did you say?" And I appreciate that from you and Carrie Anne. You guys rock. Deb does a great job with our courts and putting up with all the questions, I'm sure, that come from Dave, mostly, on Indigent Defense stuff, but I appreciate that. And, you know, he always does have the best interests of the county at heart. Daniel, he's my brother from another mother. We are not on the same side of the aisle, but Daniel has challenged me. He's fought with me. He's been on the same side as me. I totally appreciate that and respect that, and I think he'll continue to do great things for our county, especially with the urban 4H issue, and you and your wife, you know, starting that up. I appreciate that and respect that for taking the time to step up and teach some of our urban kids about their food sources. You know, that's a big deal in my neck of the woods. So, Dr. Tompkins, keep it real. Because it's been great. Thanks for butting heads with me and challenging me as well. I appreciate that and I respect that. Thanks for always, you know, playing devil's advocate with me. You taught me some valuable skills that I'm sure I'll be using in a couple of weeks in Lansing for the rest of the county. Phil, he's always, he's always good for a joke. I didn't send an email like Carl did, so I'm just doing my goodbyesies right now, so you guys got to bear with me. Sorry. But anyways, Phil, I appreciate you too, and even if you don't pay attention half the time, at the end of the day, you at least sometimes know what's going on. Carl, it's been a fun ride. I appreciate you stepping up in Human Services. I hope you continue to stay in that role. We have some things coming, obviously, with the stepping up initiative, and I just talked to Mike about this the other day again, but some of the data is going to be coming out for the initiative that was started with my team from the state, so look forward to working with you on mental health issues for our county. Rod, Rod's the quiet, quiet one of the bunch, but since he's retired, he's been, he's been a little more boisterous a little bit, but I do appreciate and respect the fact that you, if you're passionate about something, that you finally do speak up and set us straight, because you've been there and done that. But all in all, I respect and appreciate all of you. You guys have challenged me and made me grow as a person and professional, and I look forward to working with all of you in Lansing for Jackson County.
Two things. I'd like to thank the outgoing Commissioners for their time. It has been sacrifices, and appreciate working with you guys. It's just how our government's supposed to work, so I appreciate your efforts. Second comment is Merry Christmas, everyone. Daniel?
Just want to say, it has been one hell of a two years to get us to this point. There's been a lot of ups and downs, and I just want to thank all of the Commissioners for the diligent work that we are tasked with doing, and of course, say some goodbyes. Carl, I appreciate everything that you do for Lifeways, that I know you'll continue to do, and I hope to see you still hang around. John, your appointment was met with much resistance on my end, but I prayed about it, and God said, "Don't worry. The individual that sit next to you will be more of an ally than you will understand." So I just want to thank you for all of the knowledge that you brought to the board. It's been a pleasure sitting next to you and being able to lean over to a professor of political science to get a better understanding of different subjects and the support that you gave on the summer 18. That was great. I appreciate that. And my sister Sarah down there, don't worry, because I'll be seeing you, because your nieces ain't going to let you get away too far. And I just appreciate, like you said, all of our agreements and disagreements, and don't worry. I will make sure that I still give all of the front updates for the Fair. Even after we've had a difficult meeting, I'll make sure I bring that light at the end of the day. And to the rest of the board members and the incoming board members, I look forward to serving with you guys through the good times and the bad times, the easy stuff and the difficult stuff. And Merry Christmas.
Anyone else? I'd like to take this time to thank this board for allowing me to be your chair. It's been a very good experience again, these last two years. We've accomplished an awful, awful lot for the citizens of Jackson County. We've had some rough roads. We've had to step up and make some really tough decisions. I want to thank you for the respect for each other you show, that when a question is raised, you vehemently fight your beliefs, but at the end of the day, we vote and we speak as a majority after that, knowing full well that the Commissioners that were in the minority are now part of the majority and are working towards the betterment of Jackson County. I truly believe that we have done a wonderful thing for Jackson these last two years. We've set it on the road to a great, a great start, and I look forward to January, us starting again with some new faces and some new beliefs, and that we all, though, will be here for the betterment of Jackson County. I want to thank you for, again, for everything you've done, and Merry Christmas. We have no closed session. I entertain a motion to adjourn. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried.